I want to share that as specified in Article Five of the Labor Agreement with the Teachers' Union, they have the right to speak on items on the agenda when they request to. So the last speaker will be the Union President and that the three-minute time limit will not apply. Welcome to the New Haven Board of Education Regular Meeting. Regular meetings are a time for the Board to conduct its business. As a Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. The Board may hear public participation for up to sixty minutes. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three speakers, three minutes per speaker. I'll read that again. Public participation shall be limited to a maximum of three minutes per speaker. One speaker cannot yield their time to another speaker. There will be no responses this evening to any questions or concerns raised. They will be referred to the administration for review. As adults, we serve as positive role models for our students. Please be respectful of people. We ask speakers not to make defamatory comments or use abusive or vulgar language. Dr. White, are you ready for us to have public comment?
Yes, our first speaker is Leslie Blotto.
We'll have Leslie Blotto to be the last speaker, please.
Very well. Our next speaker is Kristin Hopes-McFadden.
Good evening. I'm Attorney Kirsten Hopes-McFadden. I am a recently retired teacher of NHPS and a current children's advocacy attorney. My focus will be IEP and 504 compliance in addition to expulsion due process hearings. I know my twenty-eight years of experience as a teacher in New Haven has prepared me well to protect children's rights. I come to say, I come today to say that NHPS leadership and the Board of Education must do better. Every meeting before public comment, the public is admonished to remember that we, the public, are role models for children. It annoys me every time. I really don't need anyone to tell me how to be an adult. But nonetheless, I would like the BOE and NHPS leadership to heed its own advice. Branching a meeting with Catherine Brennan on the last day of school to tell staff that the school was shutting down is not a great example for students. Where was the empathy? Not to mention, it was done with lightning speed that not even Bridgeport or Hamden was able to pull off. NHPS, NHPS leadership and the Board of Education must do better. While I notice many staff members have already been placed at other schools, that neighborhood is left without a school. To further add insult to injury, both of the school closures this year have been in predominantly black neighborhoods. NHPS leadership and the Board of Education must do better. Members of the Board of Education have told the public that it's the state's fault and/or the federal government's fault that we're not fully funded, that we need to plead our case to them. My question is, isn't that the superintendent's, her delegation and lobbyist's job? Wouldn't it have been wonderful if the superintendent, the assistant superintendents, the Board of Education members and other cabinet members to have joined the rally in Hartford and volunteered to get arrested in solidarity with the teachers and paraeducators? Instead, it's those with the least power who are expected to do the most. NHPS leadership and the Board of Education must do better. Finally, there have been calls for a forensic audit of NHPS and a line item budget that reveals all expenditures and sources of funding. I support both requests. I'd at the, at the very least expect NHPS leadership to know the budget when asked by reporters and not send said reporters to the spokesperson for answers. NHPS and the Board of Education must do better. And I think I counted fourteen fans in there. I wonder, are the students gonna have fourteen fans in their classrooms when the air conditioning is not fixed come September? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, there's one person on lobby.
Oh, sorry.
Marie Ackerman, you may speak. Marie Ackerman?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Negron, Mayor Ellicker, and the members of the Board of Ed. I have been a paraeducator at Worthington Hooker School, happily assisting twenty or more principals and assistant principals. We are a dedicated staff and a community family of students and their families. A family doesn't need to be perfect. It just needs to be united, working together, and putting children first. I am over, I really get upset over the past thirty years when I hear other educators in our field always making negative comments about Worthington Hooker School. We are not a country club school. We work long, hard hours, providing the very best for our students and their families. It's also my understanding that principals and assistant principals were hired to do their jobs effectively. And if some of their staff who do not like being held accountable for things that they do, they're the ones who create the toxic work environment for their performances or evaluations of their work. The majority of our staff and the school community do not share the same sentiment as the vocal minority. We respect your position, Dr. Negron, as our superintendent, and we ask you to please do not be influenced or make your decisions solely on discontent or unhappy employees. We, the teachers, the paraeducators, and the support staff custodians respectfully urge you to reconsider transfers of our assistant principal Jenny Clarino and seven other assistant principals and keep them where they are. This disrupts communities, neighborhoods, and teachers knowing the uncertainty about what will happen next. We ask you to please try to keep Brennan Rogers open so they can continue to carry on in their neighborhood school. And we ask Dr. Negron to hear our voices from the majority of teachers, the principals and assistant principals about any transfers. I listened to the graduation ceremonies of Wilbur Cross and Hill House, and I quote, "Dr. Negron, you said you had a child who graduated from Wilbur Cross. I graduated from Hill House High School and I went to all New Haven public schools." And we know about kindness, welcoming our neighbors, and we all have a voice in sharing our advocacy. And Mayor Ellicker, you said our city of New Haven welcomes all to this beautiful city. But you also said Principal Brown, despite any differences that you may have had, was, you thanked him and said he was one of the best principals in the city of New Haven. We have many wonderful principals in the city of New Haven. So we have many parents in our school and all the other schools in our district who advocate for their children in their schools. Thank you to so many parents for your continued support, and to you, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Leslie Blotto.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Leslie Blotto. I'm the president of New Haven Federation of Teachers and a parent of about-to-be-fifth-grader in New Haven Public Schools. Again, thank you, Dr. Yarborough, for clarifying. Article Five, Section Three F of our contract states that NHFT has the right to speak on items on our agenda. So we're reserving that right this evening. Just some context for the why behind that before I jump into specific agenda items. So back in June, I was one of the online public commenters who was locked out of participating in public comment because of what we perceive to be the arbitrary and undemocratic sixty-minute rule for public comment. Now, I recognize there's not gonna be sixty minutes worth of public comment tonight, but it does beg the question, why does the Board of Ed, different from the Board of Alders and I think any other committee or board in this city, have a sixty-minute public comment rule that ultimately limits public expression and public participation in what we perceive to be the foundation of a democracy, our public schools? So I invite the Board to reconsider the sixty-minute rule and to invite people into this space and actively take ownership of our public schools, because again, they are the bedrock of our democracy. I also want to speak generally and invite us all to consider how we move forward in a unified way. And I say this because we are enduring more and more, it seems, with every passing day, attacks on our neighbors, attacks on our students, fellow union members, and the institution of public education. Some of you probably got the New York Times alert that I got about forty-five minutes ago that the Supreme Court just doubled down with President Trump and has decided that it's okay for him to fire everyone in the Department of Education. Essentially, the green light for the, for the ending of the U.S. Department of Education. So let's be real right now. We have three branches of government conspiring against working people and against our students, and it's really time for us to stand up and fight back. We've seen an uptick in ICE arrests and violations of residents' due process in the last few weeks here in our city, and this is impacting New Haven Public School parents, New Haven Public Schools' family members, which in turn impacts our communities. And I know we are strong as a welcoming city, as in a welcoming district. But I call on our Board to really think about how we can increase our investment in legal supports and mental health supports for our students and families as we prepare for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. We know what the Trump administration's goal is. It's to spread terror. Even if they don't pick up folks, they are still creating a climate of terror that are keeping people from accessing the things they need to be participants in our community. So a hundred and seventy billion dollars to immigration and immigration enforcement, pardon me, immigration enforcement and police means less resources for Title I for IDEA. And we know the arbitrary cut of seven billion dollars by Donald Trump leaves us short on ELL resources, Title I resources, after-school programs. So here's the reality. I know some people on one side say, you all should advocate for the money and you all should do a better job of stewarding those funds. People at NHFT, many of our members and community folks have fought up in Hartford to get more funding. It is a both-and. We must continue to fight for more funding and we are really looking you to be tighter stewards of the funds that we showed up to fight for, contrary to some other people's opinions. There's going to be a special session in Hartford, that we know. So what is New Haven going to do to ensure that at that special session, we are able to pick up some of the lost revenue that we are losing as a result of the Trump cuts? Because yes, we're looking to the Board of Alders to increase another three million. However, if we're losing three million from the Trump cuts, what does that mean for us? We need to go strong to Hartford and call on robust revenue proposals. That means a capital gains tax. That means the wealthy in Connecticut can pay what they owe, so we don't have to have cuts. In addition, we need the guardrails loosened so that we can spend for Medicaid, for English language learners, for community schools, for after-school programs. That's the both-and. Now I'll pivot directly to some agenda items. I don't expect to take much more than about five more minutes. So the first agenda item I'd like to speak to is the Personnel Reports in three point zero two and twelve point oh one. So as of this afternoon, there was still not an updated budget for twenty-five, twenty-six on the NHPS website. That's concerning, because I know our goals, our, our, our North Star, what, what guides us here in New Haven is transparency and equity. So we have transfers being approved tonight or, or being passed through tonight that are moving people from their positions, their beloved schools, schools that they did not want to leave, to positions that they had to go to through the involuntary transfer process. But we still, still don't have a publicly accessible budget where folks like us can go online to nhps.net and find that. The most recent one is twenty-four, twenty-five. In addition, the public is trying to keep up with the newly created positions in New Haven Public Schools. So there's a new Director of Facilities and there's a new Chief of School Operations. And I wish Dr. White well as he moves into this position. Dr. White is incredibly responsive and collaborative. I'm not here to speak about the individual going into that position. But I am here to highlight that we have two remaining vacancies in Central Office, Dr. White's Assistant Superintendent position and the Chief of Staff. So NHFT believes that we need to collapse those vacancies just as we collapsed dozens of other positions in our schools. And I understand, I understand that some people argue that New Haven Public Schools absolutely needs four assistant superintendents and a chief of staff to operate. But others who we represent and who we speak to also believe this, that all schools need a full-time librarian to operate, that children at Hill House need access to English electives in order for them to, to continue on their journey of becoming joyful and confident readers and writers, that children at Career and Cross need additional T-Sol support so they can access the curriculum and graduate on time, that schools need more, not less, art, music, world language teachers. Because I like to give credit where credit is due. We came through the budget crisis while there's merged schools, closed school, and a, and a lot of pain from this. We did avoid layoffs of current teachers, and that is something that we should recognize and uplift. That is a good thing. However, something that I'm realizing that I'll call the layoff effect is still very real. Because if you look at the current vacancy tracker, we have at least ten music vacancies right now in New Haven Public Schools. So some of them are renowned lifelong New Haven educators who are due their retirement. And of course, they are leaving to take advantage of the, the medical benefit. Some, I believe, are leaving because they saw the writing on the wall and they didn't want to be one of the ones laid off and they wanted ultimately to find a job and secure it on their own terms. So now we're preparing for another school year where we're gonna have music vacancies in multiple schools. And we know our shared goal is student attendance. Many students go to school for music. Many students go to school for art. That is their opportunity to tap into their identity and be who they want to be. So we didn't have layoffs, but we have a layoff effect, which we need to look closely at. Because when we use the rhetoric of, uh-oh, there might be layoffs, it has perhaps unintended consequences. In addition, I'd like to speak to seven point oh on the agenda, the abstract that is going to apply for additional funds for part-time Arabic teachers. This is something to celebrate. This is something that New Haven Public Schools does well, is be the culturally responsive and culturally relevant school district in Connecticut. I think the most culturally relevant and culturally responsive school district in Connecticut. So I want to celebrate Jessica Haxey for that work. But I think we also have to go back to the budget and say, when are we going to prioritize more full-time Arabic and Pashto teachers and ultimately vote to support a budget that puts those full-time teachers in place? One, we want to be able to meet the needs of our students who speak those languages. I am a Hill resident. Our playground every night in the Hill has thirty family members, Pashto-speaking family members who just bring that playground to life. It used to be, after the pandemic and after street violence, a, a bit of a, of a, kind of a, a dead playground. And our Afghan neighbors brought that playground back to life. How, what are we doing as a school district to invest in more Pashto and Arabic-speaking full-time teachers, not only for those students and families, but also for our English speakers, our Spanish speakers, and others who would love to be able to learn those languages well? So I think let's continue to use the grants in the short term, but think long-term about investing in these full-time positions. Lastly, I'd like to speak to item eight point zero nine, which I believe you're gonna be voting on tonight. And this is another hard one for the public to try to understand. So when the New Haven Federation of Teachers and community members and our statewide coalition, when we organized, when we advocated, when we called our state reps and state senators, when we got arrested, when we did community service, picking up trash in Hartford last week, when we did all that, we did that with the hope and the belief that the funds that came from Hartford and came from the city of New Haven will be stewarded well. So now we're left wondering, how do we get to the point in the summer where we've got a five-point-six-million-dollar contract in the works, but it's not done yet? And we have to spend an additional one-point-four just this summer to ultimately get our schools to be cleaned up and ready to start? This feels like a decision that should have been made in January or February where we could have negotiated that five-point-six million to include this summer, saved one-point-four million, and possibly kept Brennan Rogers open another year. Possibly kept more English teachers at Hill House. Possibly made sure that we're not gonna be exceeding contractual class-size limits in several of our middle schools across the city. We want to be able to work collaboratively. We are committed to that work. But we need to see more transparency and more responsibility when it comes to these decisions, because we are not gonna stop fighting for funding. We're gonna stand up and fight back against the Trump administration, and we're gonna stand up and communicate clearly to Governor Lamont that revenue and spending must take priority during the special session in the fall. But we want to be able to count on you that our students truly come first. And we're not feeling that fully in this moment. So to close, we're looking at a Department of Ed that's about to be abolished. We're looking at authoritarian government that's showing up mass kidnapping our students' parents and denying them of due process. We need to show up and provide that mutual aid to our students' families. We need to show up and build the communities of care at the school level, continue to build the communities of care at the school level to ensure that our students know they are safe to come to school. And I know that has been a priority and I want to recognize that, but it's about to get a lot worse. We gotta prepare for the special session and we need, as Kirsten Hopes-McFadden said, a line item budget that we can access, because we have over a hundred and ten vacancies as we prepare for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Our students deserve fully-staffed classrooms, clean classrooms, more moderately tempered classrooms. They deserve it. We can do it. And we're counting our elected officials and employees of the Board of Ed to make it happen. We will continue to be your partners. Thank you for the time. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Dr. President, that concludes our comment.
Thank you, and thank you for the participation. Next on our agenda are the action items. First, approval of the minutes of the June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-five meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. That's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, we will vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Ailey?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Park?
Yes, also.
Yes.
Thank you. Ms. Otis, you said yes? Thank you. And I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Personnel report, Dr. Negron.
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. In this week's report, you are going to see some retirements that I do want to highlight, keeping up with my tradition. Here with us today, we have Kirsten Hopes-McFadden, who you heard during public comment retired at the end of the academic year. She had served as a social studies teacher, twenty-eight years with the district, positively impacting students' families and the New Haven Public Schools' community. We also had kindergarten paraeducator Stacy Graham, who also retired at the end of the academic year after dedicating twenty-seven years of service to the school district, as well as school business manager John Bethke, who retired at the end of the academic year, also after serving twenty-seven years. You're also going to note a transfer in the personnel report. I do want to take a minute to share that Dr. Paul White will be transferring to the position of Chief School of Operations, which replaces the former Chief Operations Officer position. Dr. White has been serving the New Haven Public Schools for the last eight years in the role of Assistant Superintendent of Instructional Leadership, overseeing twelve schools and evaluating school principals, among many other responsibilities. Dr. White is highly respected by his colleagues and administrators for his collaborative approach to leadership. We feel fortunate that Dr. White applied and has success, and has been successful in his application to the Chief of School Operations. I want to thank the interview committee, composed of Central Office representation, Administrator Union representation, and Teacher Union representation for their participation in this process. I am looking forward to having Dr. White in this role as he brings a clear understanding of our district's core mission, extensive knowledge of our district's internal operations, strong network connections with other districts and community organizations, a data-driven approach with strong analytical skills and immediate readiness to assume the role with limited on-the-job learning required as there is significant work to be done as it relates to our operations. With that, I conclude my personal report.
Thank you. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes, I move. We approve the action items of the superintendent's personnel report.
Second.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Dr. Joyner?
Yes, I, I'd like to just say what a phenomenal leader we're getting in, in Dr. White. I think I've been around long enough to know greatness when I see it and, and genuine commitment. And we're very fortunate that we still have him because he clearly has the skills to take on more responsibility and run his own, run, run his own school district. His ethics, his intellect, his courage, his dignity, and his genuine love of what he does and of people in general is really, is, is phenomenal. And I can't say enough about him. And I'm sure that we will get on top of some of the issues regarding facilities and various other aspects of our operation that we're now trying to modify our organization to come to. So I, I would hope that everybody would vote for this change.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Other discussion? Thank you also to those who are retiring after putting in so many years. Thank you very much for your service to this district, to your students, to the families, and all that you brought.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes. Ms. Downer?
Got a lot of backfeet here. I just wanted to say congratulations to the retirees um for, you know, your service here at New Haven Public School. I also um just wanted to make a correction. Um, Ms. McFadden Hope, um Attorney McFadden Hope. Um, I just wanted to make that correction. Um, also with, uh, along with the others that have retired. But I wanted to give her name the respect that she deserves. Thank you. And Dr. White, when this choice came through, everything that Dr. Joyner said resonated with me, with Dr. White. But one of the other things that resonated was the fact that he's all in. He's a New Haven-er. And that's well with me. So being all in, living in New Haven, feeling the pinch just like me, is so important to have our people here. Thank you, and I wish you well, Dr. White.
Thank you, Ms. Downer. Dr. Joyner?
Oh, I didn't realize this was a time to comment on a retiree. So I, I'd like to say that I had the uh privilege to watch um Celeste Hopes and her siblings grow up in New Haven. Her father is a dear friend of mine. Uh, he got my fir-, he helped me get my first college, part-time college teaching position. Her mother is one of the greatest teach educators that we've ever had in the system. And her sister and brother are, are also fine people. Um, Celeste was very active in the student government at Hill House. Uh, she was a superior student. And I believe she got her law degree from the University of Pennsylvania. So people who talk about our school district don't understand that we have some of the most accomplished graduates in the country uh that, that attended Hill House Lee and Cross before we had more high schools. Uh, she's always been a fighter and, and a passionate advocate for justice. And she got it honestly because both her parents are that way. And I'm really shocked because I didn't realize that she was uh retiring. Um, and I'm, I'm, I'm a bit saddened that we're losing her as an educator, but gaining her as a, as, well, she's always been an activist since she was a baby, probably. Uh, and she probably was advocating for fairness and justice in kindergarten. So that's, that's the family that she represents. So I'm, I'm going to be sad to see her go. And uh I know that she, she's not going anywhere because she's going to be here at every meeting reminding us of our responsibility. And hopefully she'll be in, in the halls of power, maybe even run for office so that she can um represent, represent our community. So I really, I'm sad to see her go, but I'm also happy for her.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. We will vote seeing no further discussion. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Matt Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. That motion carries. Next is executive session. Executive session pursuant to Connecticut General Statute one dash two zero zero six E and one dash two one zero B ten for discussion, which would result in the disclosure of attorney-client privileged records.
Second.
Dr. N-, oh, who was, who was the initial motion?
I thought you were certain.
Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, any discussion on that? Uh, I do want to ask who else should be a part of that conversation. Uh, Attorney Lexi Ades, Dr. Negrom.
Recommending that we bring Dr. White with us.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner? Dr. Joyner?
Yes, oh, oh.
Thank you. Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mr. Waters?
Yes.
Mr. Daley?
Yes.
Matt Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. We will now move to executive session. For those online, there should be a link in our email.
Hello? Uh, I can't seem to find the link. Is there a way you can send it to my phone?
Will do.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I see, Dr. Yarvero. Okay.
Thanks, Viviana. I'm here also.
All right. Bye. 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 Bye.
Can you hear us online?
I can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Hi, guys.
Okay, assistance over. Thank you.
We also have good handles for a little more motion support.
Go ahead.
Is everyone there? Or not yet?
Oh. Okay, hold on.
Is Vic from there? Can you, we can't hear you. Can you hear us? Or can you hear me?
We can hear you. We're just taking care of one technical issue.
Oh, okay, thanks.
Specifically going back to the proposal, it was not clear whether it everyone had to have union wages or not and upon completing the process that's when.
The.
Specifically, going back to the proposal, it was not clear whether everyone had to have union wages or not. And upon completing the process, that's when
Ah. Oh wait.
Thank you everyone is back. We have now returned from executive session. Dr. Negron? When you're ready? I cannot hear you. We cannot hear you online.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you very much.
Um, so thank you, um, President Yarbor. I want to thank the board for meeting in executive session. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share with you, um, information that came to my attention related to some anomalies as it pertain to the RFP process for the part-time custodial services. Uh, one those concerns were brought up. We wanted to make sure that we did our due diligence to ensure that we have stayed true to the, um, procurement process. And as such, as explained, um, to you, we do want to ensure um, that we're doing everything, uh, the way that is supposed to be done. Um, as I share an executive session, uh, the same process applied to all the entities that bid for the part-time custodial services. You may recall that at one point we did receive communication from the SIU, um, 32BJ Union inquiring if this, uh, bidder will be working on their collective bargaining agreement. At that point, we were tasked to go back and inquire, uh, which we did. At the point that we inquire with the company, uh, we should have gone back to inquire with all of the bidders. Um, because that process did not happen, uh, we want to make sure that we go back out to RFP to ensure that that opportunity happens with all potential, uh, bidders for the part-time custodial services. Um, so as share, uh, with you during executive session, we will be putting out the RFP process, um, on an expedited schedule. Uh, we hope to get that out, uh, by July 20th so that we can get responses, uh, back by August 7th. And hopefully, uh, we'll go through the whole process again, uh, score with the rubric so that we can bring forth a new recommendation for part-time custodial services. If everything goes well, we hope to have that to you by the September 8th, uh, meeting. Again, we are a city and a district that prides herself in working with unionized, uh, workers. And that is why, uh, once that was flagged, uh, although that was a question in the RFP process, we now want to make it more explicit, um, this time around. So all of those things will be included. But again, um, asking that we go back out, um, to RFP for those, for those reasons.
Thank you, Dr. Negron. Ms. Downer?
I move to rescind the prior approved part-time custodial award to Integrity Concepts Doing Business as Service Master and Direct Staff to put it out to bid.
Second.
Thank you. That has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Mr. Wilcox?
Yeah, I just think one thing I think is probably good to make clear is that, uh, Service Master has not received any funds from the district yet. So that's, that's, it's not, um, while we were rescinding it, we also have not been paying them. They haven't had the, the contract and everything. So this hasn't cost us extra money um, because of this. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further discussion, we'll vote. Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Abdullah?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicott?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. The motion carries. FNO action items? Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Thank you very much. So I will, I'm already going to be moving agreement 8.09 separately. Is there anything else anyone would like moved separately? Hearing seeing none, I move that we approve agreement 8.09, a, uh, 90-day agreement with SJ Services to provide part-time custodial management.
Second. Any discussion?
Ms. Chair?
Ms. Downer?
Uh, you know what? I rescind my, um, oh, okay, I'm good now. Okay. So I just, I just want to keep in mind that, um, you know, SJ Services has not been good to this, um, public school system. Um, and for that reason, if it was anything else, I know the schools need to be cleaned. I think they can be cleaned under another company. Um, I'm just not feeling SJ Services still. So that's what I wanted to say and that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Downer.
Mr. Chair.
Mayor Ellicott?
Wilcox. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I also wanted to underscore that, uh, just in response to a comment made in public comments about this being additional funds, the, the goal of this 90-day extension is to allow us time to redo this re-RFP process. And so this money would have been spent whether it's on SJ Services or a new contractor, regardless of what happened. This is not an additional $1.4 million that's being spent here. This is to allow us to get up to the school year to make sure that summer school, the schools are clean throughout the, the summer. Um, just as we would have done had we awarded this new contract, uh, in the originally expected time period. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ellicott. Dr. Joyner?
I'd just like to say that I have more confidence that our staff, we now have a person in place that has eyes on that. And of course, we're going to continue to have eyes on it. And I feel the same way regarding their past performance, but I believe that we have supervisory, um, personnel in place now to make sure that people do what they're supposed to do.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Let's vote. Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
No.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Abdullah?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicott?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. The motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
All right. Thank you. I'll go ahead and make the main motion now. I move that we approve the one abstract, the eight remaining agreements, the 10 purchase orders, and the three contracts as outlined on our agenda.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Abdullah?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicott?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm a yes as well. Then motion carries. Mr. Wilcox?
That completes the FNO action items. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Students' report. Mr. Abdullah, would you like to share anything?
There's only an event going on that student-led during the summer where it's like it's going to be a thrift event for people who can't afford and/or people who can't afford only a little bit. It's being held at... Give me one second. The location has changed, so I'll get back to you on that.
Okay. Is it in July or August this summer?
During August.
During August. Okay. Thank you. Are there questions? Comments? Two more, two more questions. One, what are the items that will be available? And will you receive donations of those items? Yes.
Sorry, I just got the confirmation just right now. It's being held July 27th. Location hasn't been said, but it's during July.
Great. Thank you. In terms of the item, are you collecting items?
Yes, we, during the weeks, during this week, on the 5th, the 16th, the 17th, and then the 22nd, the 23rd, and the 24th, we are currently going to be collecting said items, such as clothes, shoes, and other items at the New Haven Public Library, which has been approved.
Do they have to be new items?
Say again?
Do they have to be new items?
No, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Do they have to be new items?
Do they have to be new items?
No, they don't have to be. You could just clean them in the laundry room.
Absolutely.
Great. If you, I don't, there may already be a plan to get the word out. The word may be out.
The word is currently out.
It is out? Okay. Great. You're on top of everything. All right. Perfect. Thank you very much. Additional questions? Comments? Good. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Negron?
Thank you, Dr. Yarborough. Dr. White's going to be helping me to have advanced slides. Again, bear with me, but this is the time of year when I like to take an opportunity to pause and reflect on all the work that we were able to accomplish. So, I'm going to be walking you through slides highlighting some of the things that were accomplished. Dr. White, let me know when you are ready. Okay. So, we successfully launched and implemented the first year of our Path to Excellence. Our entire district, all 41 schools, were grounded with the clarity of our mission, vision, and core values to work on our four priorities and high-lever strategies as evident by both district and school improvement plans. A significant investment was made to fully prepare ourselves to employ the DataWise framework across the district. This past year, all 41 schools successfully implemented this continuous improvement process as evident by the collaborative classroom observations and the feedback provided by the DataWise guiding team to the school-based teams. We successfully developed and released our portrait of a graduate which outlines the key qualities, skills, and characteristics of our NHPS that students should possess upon graduation. This portrait now serves as the framework to guide the educational experience and help students prepare for success beyond high school. You may recall from the presentation back in January that this was designed through a collaborative process which included the input of over 1,800 stakeholders. Curriculum is currently being revised to align to our portrait of the graduate. The work to develop an integrated tier model of supports that embraced the whole child, both academically and behaviorally, stayed on track. The community, the committee has continued to do this work, and now we are ready to engage in this work next year, honing in on our tier instruction, looking clearly at look-for tools, and also the work that is happening inside of Tier 2, both again on the academic side and on the behavioral side. The academic team has also done the curriculum update work as you have seen, you see here, to ensure that we are now bringing about alignment to the Connecticut and national standards and that it is culturally relevant and that it allows for the use of innovative instructional practices. I am also very enthusiastic with this year's DEVOs results. DEVOs is the dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills, which is an instrument used to assess early literacy skills. We administer DEVOs three times a year. And here, I wanted to highlight the results from middle of the year to end of the year. So, the percentage of kindergarten students at or above grade level increased from 30% to 53%. The percentage of first-grade students below grade level decreased from 56% to 37%. The percentage of second graders at or above grade level rose from 35% to 47%, and we doubled the percentage of third graders well above grade level from 13% to 26%. As it relates to academic achievement, we are eagerly waiting on the results of the smarter balance. But our preliminary analysis, and I want to highlight preliminary because we have to wait for the state to release it, the analysis suggests that we should see a 0.5 increase in overall literacy proficiency with a 4.6% increase in the grade 5 cohort. I want to highlight the seven schools, again, based on preliminary data, will see an increase larger than the district and above the district overall percentage, as well as nine schools with grade 5 cohort data increases above the district average percentage. Once the state releases the results later this summer, we intend to share with you the official results honing in on the average percentage of growth target achieved, which we identified as the measured of our literacy goal, as you recall from the Path to Excellence. We also saw improvement in the NWEA results. This is our first year using this computer adaptive test that measures student achievement and growth in reading in grades 3 to 10. In 17 overall schools, the percent of typical growth achieved was over 100%. Over 50% of students reach 100% typical growth, and over 30% of students reach 150 typical growth. That means that they reach a year and a half worth of growth. As a reminder, the SAT is the high-stakes assessment required at the high school level. I am happy to share that two schools, MBA and CAREER, saw an increase larger than the state's 3% and above the district's 32% in the area of evidence-based reading and writing. Based on smarter balance, again, preliminary results analysis, we do expect to see an increase in the percentage of students acquiring English language proficiency as measured by the last linked assessment, with nine schools exhibiting double-digit gains in either oral, literacy, or both. And this chart gives you the names of those schools. Also, based on the smarter balance, preliminary math results analysis, we expect to see a 3% increase in overall proficiency in math and a 4.5 increase in the grade 7 cohort. And here are the seven schools with an increase larger than that of the district and above the district overall percentage of 17.4%. We also have a schools with a grade 5% cohort increase of 4.5% or higher and a grade 5 percentage above the district grade 7 cohort average of 18.8%. But again, the names of the schools are here, and the percentages are there for you to reference. We also saw a 4% increase in the percentage of KA students who achieve a median growth of 100% or more in math from 55% to 59% with more students also meeting the stretch growth, again, signifying about a year and a half worth of growth, and their typical growth goal, which is a year's worth of growth. But again, we saw more students showing that stretch growth. In this year's SAT results, I also want to highlight ESOM's CAREER in New Haven Academy, who saw an increase larger than the district and above the district average of 12%. And you have their percentages there. There was also significant work that continued to be done by our academic team in the area of science through the targeted professional development, focusing on unpacking the next-generation science standard performance expectations. Common formative and summative assessments were implemented in the middle grades and midterms and final exams at the high school level have been aligned to NGSS as well. The analysis of data from these assessments allowed teachers to better lesson plan to differentiate their instruction to meet the needs of our students. In social studies, again, our academic team, teachers were observed incorporating the Connecticut Elementary and Secondary Social Study standards. Students showcased year-long projects and social actions exhibited, supported by the National History Day, Connecticut Kid Governor Project Citizen Map Congressional Hearings, and others. Students also benefited from field trips to enhance their educational experience in the classroom. In the area of physical education, we saw improvements as well. The Connecticut Physical Fitness Assessment is an annual evaluation of students' physical fitness that is required for students in grades 4, 6, and 8, as well as high school, although we have the flexibility to test which grades at the high school level. This year, once scores are validated by the state, we expect to see 93.4% of our students with growth on two or more test components, which include cardiovascular endurance, muscular strength, and flexibility. In the area, again, of fine arts, just to give you insight into the work that happens in our academic team, the department successfully created an updated visions as well as mission statements that guide the work over four different content areas, that being music, visual arts, theater, and dance. And they have continued to strengthen and expand partnerships with our community to enhance the quality of the fine arts experiences for students that they receive while in our district. We want to thank all of our partners in this area. We have also continued our investments in affording our students learning pathways that will better prepare them for college and career. I am proud to say that we now have six clearly defined pathways: healthcare, manufacture, education, business, biocity, and culinary. And all of these pathways are being fully implemented, meaning that students experience a rich plan of studies, gaining college credit, and acquiring industry certification before they leave us. And here, you have a number of credits reached pathway, and you have the wealth of industry certification that the students are able to get. Our first CAREER pathway cohort graduated this year. I want to take a moment to highlight their impressive achievements. Here, you see that we had a valedictorian, a salutatorian among them. All had 100% college acceptance in a health-related field and earned an average of 25.5 college credit. And again, you have more information there that you can read at your leisure. I do want to take a minute to read the quote from one of our graduating students in this cohort. And on Slide 22, if you are following along, you can see that she says... Give me one minute. I do want to read it because it's very powerful. Just bear with me while I go to Slide 22. And she says, "For those that don't know my story, I never envisioned myself attending James Hill House High School. These four years have proven to us all how many opportunities Hill House provides their students. From being captain of the cheer team, member of both the National Honor Society and Spanish National Honor Societies, a class officer, I have been shaped into a leader that's ready to serve at the forefront of tomorrow's world. Above all opportunities I've taken off, I am extremely grateful for the creation of our Health Careers Academy pathway. I want to extend my sincerest thanks to Mrs. Argo and the New Haven Public Schools Career Connected Pathways for allowing the future healthcare providers..." for allowing the future healthcare providers to get a head start on the careers that lay ahead of us. As a result of this program, I am now a certified nursing assistant, graduate of the EMT Program at Yale Center for EMS, two-time CPR certified, and a grad, and graduating with over twenty college credits for a nursing major. To the seven of us who stuck, stuck it out until the end, Tatiana, Jaycee, Hola, Silmarie, Tajay, and Badu, I commend you all for completing this rigorous program and becoming, and becoming the first ever class to finish it through. And this was from our graduate and valedictorian, Alana Williams." We are also proud to support our students in acquiring industry certifications. We increased the total number of those certifications from one eighteen last year to one-hundred-and-fifty-eight this past year and expand and expanded the available aquaculture certification as sound school from eight to now ten. This past year was the first year, next slide, Dr. White, of our BioCity Academy. I am happy to report that all of the students passed their required core courses at Southern and committed to continuing this high level of dedication in their second year. The recruitment process for this coming year um, has been successful. We are now tapping into the rising ninth and tenth graders. And this pathway model has been gaining the interest of future collaborators. We have been in talks and we hope to see grand support in the near future. You may also recall that we successfully opened our state-of-the-art manufacturing facility at Hill House this year, where students can now learn in a facility equipped with twenty-five-century technology. Teacher, teacher training is continuing this summer. We also continue with one of my priorities, which was attendance and student engagement. The focus and coordination of this priority resulted in a one percent increase in daily attendance from eighty-seven-point-four percent to eighty-eight-point-four percent. We also observed double-digit increases uh, from last year when looking at the last three days of school. Every school day mattered. Here you see six, six schools that exceeded the district average of eighty-eight percent on the last Monday of the year and two schools that exceeded the district average on the last two days of school, inclusive of a high school. That is extremely hard work to do. So I want to commend again, Barnard, CAREER, HSC, NHA, Obama, Worthington Hooker, Zalentano, and NHA. We are also very enthusiastic about our decline in chronic absenteeism. Although it is not official, official yet, we're waiting for the state to verify numbers. We anticipate that we will see uh, how we are going to not only meet, but exceed our annual target. We expect to have a forty-five-point-nine percent decrease on the record. This reflects the extraordinary work of our schools, our school level and central office staff, as well as our students and our, and our families. I am very proud of this work. This goes to show you that not only our, our school staff matters, our department staff matters, our central office matters, our families matter, our students matter, our entire district matters as it relates to this work. The improved attendance outcomes are in part due to the hard work of our school attendance team. Every school improvement plan, I had that spelled out. Every school had one. Each, every school had an active team working all year long, being supported by the Assistant Superintendent and being supported by the Office of Youth, Family, and Community Engagement, who conducted site visits and connected families with service providers to remove barriers to attendance. I had also set a priority around school culture, culture and climate at the beginning of the twenty-four and twenty-five school year. I want to remind you that last month, I invited on our vendor, Custom Insights, to share the results of, of the school climate survey. You may recall that we saw increases in our survey participation rate from all stakeholders, from our students, from our teachers and staff, and from our families, and that we also saw increases in terms of favorable stakeholder scores. Again, from students, teachers, and staff, and families, I have that in there for you as a reminder. And I attribute this success to the alignment in priority at both this district level and the school level. We also know that the sense of belonging in school is crucial for students' overall development and well-being. And we are happy to report that we are moving in the right direction. The data not only shows a seven percent increase from last year, but also the fact that we have exceeded pre-pandemic levels from forty-eight percent in twenty-twenty-one to forty-nine percent in twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five. I want to take a moment to highlight these five schools, Ross Woodward, Fane, Worthington Hooker, Metropolitan, and Nathan Hale, who made significant progress in their twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five school climate survey. The Office of Student Support worked closely with other academic departments. I am pleased to report that we saw an eight-point-five decrease in the chronic absenteeism gap between all students and students with disability. We also saw a three-point-nine decrease in the gap between the, the percent of students achieving growth targets in mathematics, as well as a twenty-eight percent reduction in the suspension data gap, again, between all students and students with disability. All of our schools now have a Wilson Reading trained teacher, a teacher who has completed specialized training in the Wilson Reading System, which is a structured literacy program designed to help students with reading and spelling difficulties, including dyslexia. The multilingual department also worked closely with our other academic departments. The comprehensive program review recommendations from the previous years were, um, were fully implemented. The professional development sessions focused on sheltered instruction strategies. The preliminary last links results show that we should see a one-point, point sixty-one percent increase in English oral proficiency and a one-point-twenty-five percent increase in English writing proficiency, as well as slight increases in the district overall growth. I want to thank the department also for offering various parent workshops throughout the school year. I am also pleased and proud to report that we launched this past year the first student-led social emotional learning symposium with the participation of ninety percent of our high schools. We increased the number of schools using the Positive Behavior and Intervention Support Model from eight to sixteen and trained forty-eight staff members in the Train the Trainer Model. This now increases our capacity to augment the number of schools using PVIS. We were also able to train a total of seventy-eight educators in mental health first aid. New Haven, as you know, is rich with linguistic diversity. And NHPS is a very, is very proud to continue supporting our students with their native, native language acquisition. A total of two-hundred-and-twelve students acquired the Seal of Bilinguality, representing fifteen different languages. I'm also happy to share that we piloted the Silver Seal of Bilinguality in eighth grade this year, and a hundred-and-forty-six students successfully acquired representing five different languages, Arabic, Chinese, Pashto, Russian, and Spanish. We also kept up with our award-winning athletic tradition. The Hill House Girls Track were, were this year's state champions in, in both Class Double M for indoor and outdoor track. Eleven of our teams qualified for their respective state tournaments. And we are now part of the C I C, C I A C Class Act Schools Program, and we'll have representation on the state level. And you know that soon we will have a fully renovated athletic center at the Floyd Little, um, as it is going renovations at a cost of five-point-five million dollars. Again, I want to thank the city and I want to thank our city delegation for helping us to secure those funds. Our teachers were also recognized not only locally, but at a national level. For example, we have Mrs. Analisa Martin's Zalentano teacher, who is a national finalist for the prestigious Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching for K six. You may recall that we had Hill House Band teacher, Mr. Joshua Smith, who was able to take our band to DC to march in the Memorial Day Parade. And we also had Mrs. Laura Dooley Davis teacher, named an extraordinary educator by Curriculum Associates. We continue to be committed to fostering an adult learning culture. This last year, we offered an onboarding program to our new teachers and substitute teachers with the help of the literacy supervisors. They provide a professional learning to our paraeducators as well to support with the HMH literacy implementation in our classrooms. Throughout the support, um, through the support of the Nellie Gray, Nellie uh, May Grant Advising Community Partnerships Grant, we also provided communities of practice on various topics to approximately two-hundred teachers. So again, lifting, lifting the work of our academic teams. Uh, we also had the inaugural cohort of eighteen Yale teaching fellows who began last month. This is the partnership, as you may recall, with Southern, Yale, New Haven Promise, and NHPS that trains teachers from diverse backgrounds to acquire certification in, in shortages areas. These fellows will be with, with mentor teachers across nine of our schools in this academic year. We had another successful year of the partnership with the College of Education at Southern and NHPS, that is our resident C program, which prepares paraeducators to obtain their special education certification so that they can graduate, be certified, and be back in our classrooms. Many of our graduates applied and received scholarships to support with their college plans. A total of three-hundred-and-sixty-seven graduates applied for the New Haven Promise. Eight of our graduates were awarded the Pennington Scholarship. That means that they're going to receive eighty thousand year, eighty thousand dollars for four years, so every year they receive that money to attend NHBCU. Also, the New Haven Scholarship Fund awarded a total of two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand-four-hundred scholarships among a hundred-and-fifty-one of our graduates. Our schools are also doing well. I want to highlight that ESOM's was one of only two in the entire state. Let me say that again. One of only two in the entire state that got awarded the Magnus School of America um, Excellence by the um, Schools of America. So again, ESOM's only one of two with a School of Excellence Award. And also four of our Magnus Schools received the Schools of Distinction Award, Barnard, Coa, Martinez, and Moro Sherlin. Um, our Adult and Continuing Education Center, again, soon we will have a state-of-the-art facility. I wanted to highlight that they continue to be one of the most successful centers in our state. This past year, they serve over sixteen-hundred students, producing a hundred-and-forty-two high school graduates and students who earn industry certifications such as Safe, Digital Literacy, and OSHA. I am almost done. A total of a thousand-one-hundred-and-fifty-two students earned their high school diplomas, with another fifty-six potentially earning it at the end of this month upon completion of our summer school. Our counselors, school counselors work very hard to ensure that every graduate has a plan upon completion. Here you can see their post-secondary plans. With forty-six-point-five of our graduates moving on to a four-year college degree, twenty-six-point-two going to a two-year college degree, eight-point-three to a trade or VoAET program, a five-point-nine going straight to join the workforce, three percent going to pursue a certification at a two-year program, two-point-seven taking a gap year, and two-point-three going into the military. And zero, I want to repeat, zero this year with no plan. We make sure every graduate had a plan. Um, all of this work, of course, is not possible without the ongoing support of our partners. I want to say thank you to all of them. I do want to take a moment to highlight the strong partnership that we have with the city of New Haven, with Yale, Southern Connecticut State University, um, Connecticut State Community College, the Greater New Haven Chamber of Commerce, even LEAP, who this year we cutting off as many programs and they took on a lot of the programming for our kids. I want to highlight U.S. Representative Rosa DeLora, who was instrumental again in ensuring that we had the grant that opened up the manufacturing facility and so many of our partners. But again, nothing happens without our partnerships. And lastly, um, we have already begun to work on twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six. That work begins now with our academic team putting the work to support our students in our summer. So right now, we have programming, as you see, through different, um, different areas such as grades K three or pro, or strength and self-efficacy uh, program for our middle school students, or extended, uh, school year for students with disability, or English Learners Academy, or High School Credit Recovery and/or dual. or high school credit recovery and or dual credit. Again, the work of our academic team, the work of our assistant superintendents, the work of our assistant superintendent of curriculum instruction and assessment. And that concludes my presentation. I want to say that it's been a pleasure to serve as your superintendent. Despite the challenges that we have financially, I am happy to say that I am no longer a rookie because of this superintendent. If you are a female, if you are a female of color who survives two years, that means that you've done good work. So I'm going to pat myself in the back as meeting all of those credentials to say that I am proud to be serving as your superintendent. In year three, despite challenges to work hard for every child that comes across our doors so that we can continue to break cycles of poverty, that we can continue to see kids that look like me, who are brown, who are black, who are whatever color they are, and that my team and I will continue to work hard, even in these facilities that are falling apart, to continue to find funding, to do the work so that at the end of the day, our kids can have amazing public education. They can graduate prepared and they can feel confident that they will have a superintendent that will continue to use my voice to lift their needs that we have in cities and that we have in public education, especially today, where the profession is being threatened by everybody around us. That completes my long winded superintendent update. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Negron. Discussion, Mr. Wilcox.
Uh, thank you. I'll be brief. I just want to say thank you to Dr. Negron. Um, these numbers are moving in the right direction and it's just further evidence that we've made the right decision as to who is uh, our CEO of our, our district. I also know that, you know, this obviously is the work of thousands of people working from assistant superintendents, including teachers, directors, all manner of, of thing, and all manner of people in different roles that get these successes. I just wanted to highlight a couple of quick little things. One is, I especially appreciate the increase in the certifications and college credits that students can earn while they're here, in particularly when they're earning both. If you're earning that healthcare certi, those healthcare certifications, you can get employment immediately to be able to do work for employers who will pay for your further education in a lot of cases because it's in their interests to have a educated workforce. So those types of things, if somebody works at a university, it's just key. If you walk out of high school with a college credit, you know you can already do college because you've already done some, you know, through that. And so it, it just demystifies it as well as the work that people can have immediately for employment. The other thing I want to highlight, I think I saw the number for McKinney Vento right now is eight hundred and forty seven. So this is a district with roughly four percent of our students meet the definition for homelessness, for housing insecurity under the McKinney Vento program. And so it's just one little number to highlight the challenges that some of our students are facing. And we could list thirty other numbers that show those challenges. So I think that this increased successes in a district where we have below the state average of per pupil funding to pay for all this. The fact that we're still seeing this just shows a lot of dedication in the workforce that you lead. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Wilcox. Dr. Benitez.
I want to thank everyone in, in your team, Dr. Negron, and, and you especially. But I want to highlight that the work that you are all doing is creating and you are trying to do an overhaul of an after pandemic. Very difficult time we, we all encounter, as I started in the, on this board. Uh, we were just coming out of, of the pandemic. But what I want to remind everybody, especially people have amnesia. We used to do good work with five assistant superintendents with uh, a deputy superintendent for uh, assessment and um, I forget now all the, but for the academic person who was at a deputy, we had a chief of staff. And all of those people are not here. We only have three now. We don't have a deputy. We have an assistant superintendent who supports academics. We don't have a chief of staff. So I want to congratulate your team because I know if you have accomplished these things as a team is because everybody has taken the work of those people who are absent, who are not hired by this district. And they have done the work to make sure students were given the opportunity to take advantage of all that is possible to give them within our schools. I have to also thank teachers and school staff because I know we have a lot of, um, a lot of, um, my God, I can't remember how to say that. The, the, we have many vacancies in schools. And I know that when we have vacancies, everybody in the building has to work hard to cover, to make sure kids get an opportunity to learn. So thank you all because even with all these crises that we have encountered, this district is moving forward. And listen, please take one day, not just to pat yourselves on your back, hug each other, say thank you to each other, and celebrate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Mayor Ellicker.
Just wanted to add, uh, congratulations to Dr. Negron and her team for um, showing very clearly in the numbers how much progress you're making. And wanted to reemphasize what uh, both Mr. Wilcox and Dr. Benitez said about how you're doing this under uh, everyday decreased resources. Um, just imagine if our schools were fully funded and you had even more resources, what you could accomplish and what we could accomplish together. But you've done an incredible job and really grateful for the work you're doing.
Thank you, Mayor Ellicker. Mr. Della, did you raise your hand or?
Uh, no, sorry.
Oh, okay.
I do want to, I do want to thank the board for my first day being here. Um, got a little confusing at first, but I'm starting to get it. Um, I want to thank um, all the teachers who have retired. Um, I also want to thank the board members for their hard work as it is. Um, I wish there were more um, certifications for high schoolers, especially because they're more diverse. One could like art, one could like music, one could like different other medical specialties or um, business. We especially do need a business certificate for, especially for schools like Metropolitan. So hopefully in the coming months, we can decide on such programs and work towards that. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Negron also would like to congratulate you and your team, the students, the families, um, and, and other supports that are out there. I wrote down positive growth on top of positive growth. Uh, in terms of what you represented and presented on today. Uh, in some cases, hitting benchmarks, in other cases, exceeding them significantly. Uh, it is not an easy task to make gains. So I am very appreciative and want to applaud and congratulate all those involved. As well, I think I heard you talk about uh, students that planned their, self-planned their own conference. Um, I, I don't know if they're inviting board members to future ones. Uh, but uh, that, that really just spoke to me. Uh, as someone who was also a, a student leader and servant in my, in my own right, long, long time ago. The space for students to take initiative, to allow them to stretch their wings, take something that is a thought, but actually work collaboratively and then be able to actualize it. Uh, not only does it build confidence, but it also builds real world experience in terms of what it takes to be a team, to collaborate on something. And also to take something which might be a good idea in my head, but is a much better idea when other people are able to contribute to it, shape it, take some things away, add some things to it. Uh, so thank you for just the leadership that is happening all over this district and the service uh, to our students that's happening. Dr. Negron, is there anything else you would like to say for your report?
No, I thank you for your remarks and that does conclude my presentation.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is the president's report. Unless there is an objection, we will begin meeting at King Robinson, starting with the first Board of Education meeting in August. I think that's August eleventh. Uh, and if there is objection, we can move to add the item uh, to the agenda and then vote on it. So feel free to let me know uh, at some point. And if there's any objection now, you can make it. Okay, so we will uh, move to King Robinson in August. And uh, we've also asked the district to work with our student reps to make sure that they will be able to get to the location for our new meeting. Thank you. Any comments or questions? All right, see none? Teaching and Learning Report, Dr. Joyner.
Yeah, I was strategically silent because I'd have an opportunity to say what I want to say about the Negron, Dr. Negron's report. When I give my brief report, um, I, I can't say enough about the fact that we've overcome so much. Dr. B talked about it a bit. But it was not only COVID, but over the last ten years, we've had some leadership challenges. And thankfully with uh, Dr. Tracy and Dr. Negron, we, we've gotten, gotten back to what our system does very well. And that is educate children from all walks of life. And I think that it is historically significant that public education has been a prime mover in the human rights movement. If you think about it, all of, all of the problems that we've had in our society, regarding race, gender, sexual orientation, what have you. Those problems have been worked out in the schools. And uh, New Haven is a, is, is a school system that is closer to the democratic ideal of e pluribus unum. And also closer to that famous quote during the height, heightened immigration period. Give me your tired, your poor, your huddled masses yearning to be free. On any given day, we can have kids from all sectors of the world. Many of them come here without speaking English as a first language or not even knowing English. Many of them come from war torn, torn countries. And many of them come from situations where they don't have the type of public school opportunities uh, that, that we have in, in our system. And the fact that we, despite, um, to quote Shakespeare, enduring the slings and arrows of outrageous fortune, despite having to deal with all of that, we don't give up. And the only thing that will stop us if we take our off the prize and we, we attack each other. And I think that if, if you study history, you learn that the most, the most important movements that are grassroots movements are when grassroots people realize where the real problems are and who the real enemy was. And I can't say it strong enough. There are some enemies of public education that always has been. And so I, um, I want to thank every single parent, teacher, student, aide, content area supervisor, central office staff. And while I'm on that, I'm on that, we cannot make this just about people that face students every day. This is about having a logistical support system that allows us to provide support for teachers in the classroom in any area that they needed in. And that's why we need math supervisors, science supervisors, and English and social studies supervisors. And we need professional development. And we also need a, a city hall that is dedicated to public education, does not interfere with the hiring and firing of, of, of people in the system. And a city hall that works tirelessly to try to provide as much support for education as possible. And I would add, uh, our state legis, a state legislative uh, group as well as, as we have the best uh, senators and representatives at every level of, of any state, I believe. And it, and it's because we haven't given up on the American dream and that we, we honor the young people that come to us regardless of their sex orientation, their first language, their complexion, uh, how, clothes they have and all of that. And I'm really proud of the system. And I'm proud of the work that's being done by it. And I also want to give a shout out to this board. Dr. Yarborough, you have been a phenomenal um, president. Uh, and your, your calmness and your intellect and your quick insight. Uh, Mr. Wilcox has worked harder than a government mule in terms of uh, the finance department. Uh, Mrs. Downer has brought a passion and, and an aggressive commitment to fairness that, that we certainly need. Um, Mr. Juarez has proven to be a phenomenal appointment. Um, Dr. Benitez is Dr. Benitez. I think her, her reputation, her work and her commitment, her wit, and her own personal gene to speak for themselves. Um, we have had great student representatives. I get calls from friends all over the country. How do you guys do that with students? And I think one, we trust them, we believe in them, and we don't try to stifle them. Uh, I'm trying to think if I missed anybody on the board. I don't think I had. But we, we, we serve as volunteers. And I don't think there's been a time when we needed to have a special meeting and people couldn't figure out a way to take time off their jobs, off their family responsibilities to have those meetings so that we can get things done. And um, Frederick Douglass said it best. He said, you may not get everything in this world that you pay for, but you will pay for everything that you get. And we're paying for it and it's not going to be easy because we're in, in a, in, in shark infested water, waters. We're in a hostile climate for education and helping people in general. And uh, I, I believe that we're stronger than our adversaries. I think we have the moral high ground. I also think that we have the energy and the intellect and the courage to um, do this. And I, I like to have a special shout out to Mayor Ellicker because you know, you can look at him and see a slim guy and think that you got a ninety pound weight then, but he's a giant in his own right. And he's not afraid to speak truth to power. And he's not afraid to advocate for what cities need in order to be successful. And so we have, we have a real perfect storm of, of talented and, and driven board members, a strong supportive mayor, uh, a board of alders that, that I think very highly of, particularly the leadership of, of that board and alders like Hunter Smith and Adam Marshawn and others who really tried to look out for us. So that's why we have improved in teaching and learning and we've improved in the uh, social and emotional outcomes for our kids. The sad thing about it is that the work is never done. And we have miles to go before we sleep. So as, as a person who's been around for a long time, done every job in the system, been in every union in the system except for path professionals, uh, I think we're doing pretty well and we just have to continue. And we have to continue to practice no fault problem solving. And we just have to continue and we have to continue to practice no-fault problem solving, collaborative uh interactions around problems and try to reach consensus around the big issues that affect us as a community and as a school system. And uh I, I, I really do believe in Dr. Negron, what she's doing. She's as cool as a cucumber, uh, like uh the uh quote in the movie The Black Panther. When his sister said, "You froze," he said, "I never freeze." And I've never seen Dr. Negron freeze. Uh, she just puts her head down and keeps working at it. And I appreciate that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Next, the facilities naming committee report, Dr. Joyner.
We've got some names that uh people have been whispering in my ear. I'll tell you who they are. And I, and I told the people the process. Uh, Bessie Jenkins was an outstanding community activist in uh in books that, the, the area where we have Catherine Brennan. And uh I had had the opportunity to teach her children. And she also was an alder and she really kept that system honest. And there are people in the community who would like to name something after her. Uh, that's one person. Uh, the late um Michael Fox, who was a phenomenal member of the community, very, very much involved in athletics. He's all, he also was one of our truancy officers. He, he passed away too soon. Uh, there are a number of people who would like to name the weight room at, at the Florida Athletics Center, Center after him. And I've also given them the steps they have to take in order to make an official recommendation. There was a third person, but I can't remember right now, but I'll, I'll, I'll have that information for you the next time. So the, so the names that are, that are, that are, that are coming up now are Bessie Jenkins, who raised eight children as a single-parent mom, and uh Michael Fox, who served above and beyond the calling duty uh in his capacity as a coach and as a youth advocate and, and youth supporter. So I'll be bringing more official stuff with you regarding those uh as, as, as I hear more from people. Uh, and the last thing is that uh I think superintendent and I'll come up with a way to create the signage for uh Mrs. Pappas for Clemente. And if it works out the way that we like it to, it'll be something that we will develop with our own resources and it won't have, it won't incur any cost to the family. And also your, your concern about Mr. Bowie. Uh, some time ago, the music room at Hill House was named after him. Uh, I think when I first got on the board, the process wasn't as elaborate as it is, as it is now. But he was a, he's responsible for all these great musicians that have, that, that have come out of Hill House and the city of New Haven, as well as the work he did at the Dixielaw Children's Creative Arts Center, where he was a volunteer uh working with kids, teaching them music. And uh he certainly deserves this. So that uh concludes my report on facilities naming.
Thank you, Dr. Joyner. Any discussion? Head start report, Mr. Wilcox, and citywide school building report, Mr. Wilcox.
All right, thank you. The next three items will be very brief. For head start, we meet this coming Thursday, July seventeenth at five P M. Uh, for citywide building uh committee, the uh, we met last week on July tenth. One thing I would like to note is there is a new format that's being tried out for the stewardship report or the, the report of the major projects, building projects uh in the district. So if you, anybody has any comments, things they would like to see added to it or things that don't make sense, if you want to take a look at that, please send um, I guess I would say, suggest, send your comments to the superintendent and to Dr. White um on that report. And then finally, for finance and operations, uh, we met, had our regular meeting last week. Those minutes are posted and we meet again on Monday. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Governance report, Dr. Benitez.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Um, we met on June twenty-sixth and at that meeting, we were able to review the guidance document that has been created and continues to be improved uh for our latest um, our updated policy on expulsion. And we also cre- uh, were able to see what uh the department has created uh as an outline for critical, for the critical components of guidance related to suspension. Um, I have to say that we were able to listen to and read uh some of the things that they are trying to do to make sure that um the policy is not just uh a document that sits on, on a shelf in the sense of people read it, they understand it, but they are creating the structures that are necessary to make sure that um expulsions are reduced if possible and suspensions are reduced and, if possible, eliminated when it's totally unnecessary. That does not mean that uh they are not thinking about making sure that the environment in schools is safe. That continues to be a priority for the district. But we were very impressed with the things that they are trying to do um to update everything that they're doing in that area. Uh, hopefully we will be able to share this with you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Benitez. Any discussion? Next is the food service task group report. Uh, this task group met last week and uh some of the topics we spoke about, summer meals are, have officially begun and are being served. The food groceries uh gap group is meeting and planning and being prepared for the gap that comes between the end of the summer programming and the beginning of the school year. Uh, the district staff as well as uh the nurse group um and parents are working together as relates to collecting food allergy information from a physician so that we make sure that there needs to be a modified food plan for any child within the district, that a proper documentation is there uh so that uh we may serve them in the right manner. Uh, there was also a press conference, thank you, uh, press conference that was held a few weeks ago, which was a collaboration of different towns uh talking about uh the significance of food insecurity and providing food to our families. Uh, one thing that uh stuck out to me in the conversation is that if uh through the federal government, meals are disturbed uh where the budget is cut or it becomes more difficult for families to qualify for food assistance, uh, food insecurity will grow uh within our district during um the school year and also during the break times. Uh, so we definitely need uh attention there and the district is uh looking to be responsive as information comes forward. Any discussion? Seeing none, uh, I welcome a motion to adjourn.
Well moved.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, Dr. Joyner?
Yes.
Mr. Juarez?
Yes.
Mr. Wilcox?
Yes.
Dr. Benitez?
Yes.
Ms. Downer?
Yes.
Mayor Ellicker?
Yes.
I'm a yes as well.